Thank you very much. Welcome to the special council meeting, the 30th of June, or the Budget Meeting for Ipswich City Council. The meeting opens at nine o'clock this morning. I call attendants, and in the council chambers we have all the councillors, except for councillor Fekner. And I'd like to move from meeting attendance via audio link. I'd like to move, I notice that councillor Fekner has requested attendance at the special council meeting via audio link, so I'll move that in accordance with section 254k of the Local Government Regulations 2012, and 8.6.2 of council meetings procedures policy, that councillor and Fekner be permitted to participate in the meeting via audio link. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. Any discussion? I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. It's unanimous in the room, so thank you very much, and I welcome councillor Fekner. [S02] Good morning, Mayor, councillors. Thank you. We now move on to the acknowledgement of country. I call on councillor Cornsman to give us the acknowledgement of country. [S03] Thank you, Mayor. We recognise that there are
traditional custodians of this land on which we meet today to make important decisions. The spirit of those traditional custodians is with us today as we try to make the best decisions on the use of that land and those resources. We pay respects to those, respect to those traditional custodians, acknowledging past and present leaders, and the encouragement of new leaders as they emerge. We welcome indigenous and Torres Strait Islanders in attendance. [S01] Thank you councillor Cornsman. We're now moving on to the opening
prayer, and I invite councillor Tully to provide an opening prayer.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, we seek you to be with us in this meeting today. Assist us to be an example to others, bringing strength and encouragement in whatever we do, and equip us for the ongoing challenges as they arise. Give the guidance to continue, continue to make wise decisions for both the short and long term benefit of our city and our community, regardless however difficult and unpopular some will be. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much councillor Tully. There are no apologies or leaves of absences. So I move on to item five, which is the declarations of interest in the matter. I understand we have a few of those. I think deputy mayor, are you the first one?
In accordance with section 150EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Jacob Madsen inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 6.5, recommendation B, titled Rates Concessions Charitable Nonprofit/Sporting Organisations. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I'm a member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee. They're a beneficiary of that rating concession. As a result of that conflict of interest, I'm going to leave the meeting room while the matter is considered and voted on. [S01] Thank you very much, deputy mayor. Appreciate that declaration. Are
there any other declarations councillor Cornsman?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with section 150EQ of the Local Government Act 2009, I councillor Kate Cornsman inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item 6.5. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is that my partner is a member of Legacy, a non-executive member of Legacy, and I am a non-executive member of Ipswich Hospice. And those, both of those organisations benefit from this.
And how do you wish to, how do you plan to manage that?
I can plan to me, leave the meeting. Yes, thank you.
Thank you councillor Cornsman. Are there any other declarations? Yes councillor Tully?
Yes, in relation to item 6.5, I declare that I have the following three interests, or declarable interests, that three years ago I was a former president, former patron of the Goodna and District Rugby League Club. I'm an honorary life member of the Goodna Bowls Club, and my spouse is employed by an associated entity of the Salvation Army Queensland Property Trust that is not related to the commercial activities of the trust. As with last year, having declared that, these are of no personal benefit to me, and I intend to stay in the meeting if, and, you know, vote in relation to the rates concessions for those three organisations.
So we'll have to put that to the vote? You're declaring the interest?
Yes. [S01] Okay. So what are you proposing? Oh, well, having declared the interest that on the basis that they are remote and minor matters, and that these are ongoing rates concessions that have been provided for many years to these organisations, I'd, yeah, with the consent of the meeting, I'd propose to vote on those matters. [S01] Thank you. Councillor, do you have any
personal financial benefit from these organisations?
None of them at all. [S01] Any, any members of your family? No, as I say, in relation to the last one, that's a matter that's not related to the commercial activities of the trust. [S01] Okay. Any other questions with councillor
Tully? Okay, so I move that councillor Paul Tully participates and votes on item 6.5, because there is no personal financial benefit to the councillor, and therefore a reasonable person would trust that the final decision is made in the public interest. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Ireland. I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour. It's unanimous in the room, noting that councillor Tully is not voting. Councillor Fekner, how do you vote? [S06] Affirmative. Thank you very much. It's carried and passed. Any other declarations of interest? Thank you very much, the three councillors, for those declarations. We now move on to item 6.1, the reports for the budget. My fellow councillors, CEO, residents and rate payers of Ipswich, it is my honour to table the Ipswich City Council 2022/23 Budget and Annual Plan. This is the third budget handed out by this council, but undeniably the toughest. From the start of our budget planning just six months ago, so much in Ipswich, and indeed the world, has shifted. After two years of a punishing COVID pandemic that has wreaked havoc on our health system, our economy and way of life, 2022 has tested us even further. In February, South East Queensland was once again hit by devastating floods. But a very different flood to 2011, a rain bomb that set over the South East and refused to relent, causing rivers and creeks to rise rapidly. While the city of Ipswich was fortunate to suffer no loss of life during this disaster, the impact on our homes and businesses, parks and roads, and our ability to bounce back physically and mentally was immense. Assumed the rain had only just stopped falling when a significant weather event in May was followed by another, but thankfully a less severe flood. Nevertheless, the damage was done and the city had to once again embark on a long road to recovery. Council did the clean up by removing almost 10,000 tonnes of waste from across the city, giving residents free giving residents free access to our recycling and refuse centres, and providing free curbside collection and skip bins for residents, businesses and community groups in need. There were more than 8,500 visitors to Riverview and Rosewood Recycling and Refuge Centres, and council's curbside collection crews collected at least 1,000 tonnes of waste directly from affected properties. More than 290 skip bins, around $150,000 in higher fees, were delivered free of charge to assist Ipswich businesses clean up after this disaster. Our recovery and rebuild, however, is a much tougher challenge, and one that will take the city many months, if not years, to overcome. In the immediate aftermath of the floods, more than 100 roads had to be repaired and opened, as well as around 100 sporting and recreation facilities. Council has filled more than 3,000 potholes since the floods, and has set aside a further $1 million in this budget to fix 6,000 more in the next year. The Ipswich Civic Centre suffered significant water damage requiring extensive repairs. The Lobstree Bridge was repaired not once but twice, and College's Crossing was all but destroyed. While ensuring the safety and speedy recovery of the city of Ipswich is our highest priority, it comes at a significant cost to council. To date, council spent more than $5 million on flood recovery, and this budget will deliver another $30 million to get our city back on its feet. But at the same time, we were starting our recovery, the world started to feel the financial pressures caused by the war in the Ukraine, the ongoing impact of Covid-19, interruptions to fuel supplies and global supply and trade shortages. These global factors are making life in Ipswich more expensive and putting pressure on the hip pocket for our residents and businesses. While council's not immune to these pressures, today's budget balances the cost of living pressures we are all experiencing with the investment needed to boost our flood recovery and increase essential services. Today council delivers a record $621 million budget for the people of Ipswich, underpinned by a total rate rise of 4.49% for residential properties. This represents an average increase of $1.48, $1.48 per week for residents, and supported by an average commercial rate rise of 3.45%. And while it's been a tough few years for our communities, this budget also paves the way for our bright future ahead. In a first for council, we are easing the cost of living pressures for the most vulnerable members of our community through a new part pension concession. From tomorrow, residents who receive a part pension will be eligible to receive a pensioner remission of $120 per annum. This will bring immediate financial relief to around 3,500 part pensioners, and put $430,000 back into the pockets of those who truly need it. Council is also building for our future, as Ipswich continues to maintain its position of Queensland's fastest growing city. Our city is set to welcome a further 310,000 residents, more than doubling our population in the coming decades. To manage this growth sustainably, it will require significant investment in our roads, transport and infrastructure across all levels of government. Ipswich City Council is taking this challenge, investing heavily in its three-year capital plan, and delivering more than $470 million of significant projects between now and 2025. $229 million of this will be invested in Ipswich the next 12 months to upgrade our local road networks, improve our parks and sporting fields, and deliver strategic transport projects to keep our communities moving. For our fastest growing areas of Ipswich, this will see the planning and design work delivered for vital upgrades of Ripley and Fisher Roads, in the Ripley Valley, busy School Road and Red Bank Plains, and a further $15 million towards the construction of Red Bank Plains Road. Across our established suburbs, more than $32 million has been set aside for rehabilitation of sealed and gravel roads, plus new and upgraded curb and channels. Today's budget will see council invest in the first stages of the delivery of the Ipswich Justfield Central Public Transport Corridor, contributing half a million dollars towards a $10 million tripartite commitment to make this critical transport project shovel-ready. This project is a critical element in addressing significant transport underinvestment throughout Ipswich, and will finally connect our growing suburbs to fast, reliable and affordable public transport. And as we sit here in the chamber today, outside Tumal Place is alive with school holiday activity as we continue to invest in a thriving CBD to restore the beating heart of our city. While it wasn't the decision, while it wasn't the decision of this council to embark on this ambitious project, we've had no other option than to deliver the best possible outcome and the greatest financial return for the people of Ipswich. This month saw the first two tenants open in the Nicola Street Precinct, Gelatissimo and Terry White Kemart, with many more to follow in the next 12 months. As we watch a once derelict mall transform into one of South East Queensland's premier dining and entertainment precincts, I'm proud to say that this is owned by and for the people of Ipswich. Environment sustainability remain a high priority for council, particularly when it comes to one of our greatest challenges, waste. Council is committed to transitioning the city away from landfill and towards a circular economy, with a $6.3 million contribution towards a council-owned mature recovery facility in a partnership with Redlands and Logan City councils. We are prioritising our local waste collection for our growing Ipswich community. Council invest another $10 million to upgrade and expand council's waste truck fleet to ensure as our region continues to grow, so are the services we deliver to the Ipswich community. This is in addition to an overall commitment of $11 million to protect and improve our natural assets over the next 12 months. Our much-loved White Rock Spring Mountain Conservation Estate suffered significant damage during our recent weather events. So as part of council's rehabilitation work, we will deliver a boardwalk and lookout to see this iconic estate built back even better. And of course, we know how much the community takes pride in its own open spaces, our local parks, sporting fields and even our own footpaths. It has been extremely difficult through the impact of Covid-19 and a significant wet season for our contractors to continue to meet the high level of service council sets for its mowing and maintenance. Therefore, council will deliver an additional $1.7 million for an expanded in-house mowing and open space maintenance team. This will create jobs for an additional 21 staff over the next few months, and put council back in control to ensure we are continuing to meet the community's expectations when it comes to mowing. These are indeed tough times at Ipswich, and there's no denying this has been a tough budget to develop in the midst of mounting external pressures. However, we as councillors are tasked with delivering a budget that manages the challenges of today while continuing to plan for tomorrow, and I believe we have achieved that today. And of course, every budget annual plan is the result of months of hard work and deliberation. I would like to thank the deputy mayor and my fellow councillors for their leadership in delivering this budget, as well as our CEO and her team for the support they have offered us along the way. This council has delivered a sound budget, a solid budget for Ipswich, that continues to deliver on our visions and ambitions for the future. Thank you, and I commend the 2022 and 2023 budget and annual plan to the chamber. I move for the adoption of the 2022, 2023 budget and associated matters, and I move recommendations A through to X together. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Doyle. I'll open it up for discussion.
Thank you mayor, I'd like to share some thoughts on the budget this morning. Firstly, I wanted to acknowledge a lot of the work that's been put in by the staff in what's been a pretty challenging period. The flood obviously has a big impact on council's bottom line, and we've had to readdress some priorities and it was a lot of work, and full credit to everyone. We, we did do our best to try to fix it up. There's also some adverse economic conditions in the broader economy that are arising, inflation still getting a run on. There's just a bit of uncertainty in the air, and there's, there's a lot of things in the Australian economy that have never really had a correction for a while, and they're looking a bit, a bit of a, you know, they're concerning, and I think we could have some pretty, pretty horrible operating conditions in 12 months if, if things don't go away. I also just wanted to highlight a couple of things. The funding for the Ironbark Park clubhouse down at South Ripley, that's a really positive thing. That's fully grant funded by the federal government. Great to see that piece of infrastructure being delivered. Wanted to thank officers for how active and, I guess, well, they're on the ball now about Ripley Road and Fisher Road, two particular roads that are pretty overdue for upgrades in Ripley. I think that that work will progress pretty well now, and I think it's, they both resemble in, in one way, a great opportunity for us to get a better relationship with EDQ and the, the state government. A lot of people talk about partnerships being the way forward, and I think rather than making adverse comments about other levels of government, I think it's time for us to just work with people. People put their heart and soul into their job regardless of what level of government they're working in, and we need to respect that, we need to be constructive. And I think that's the start to that, I think we'll be able to do that with EDQ. Very good to see some funding for Grand Chester Mountmore Road to be designed, but I must, you know, warn everyone, if the money doesn't follow through for construction of that, we're going to have a problem. Sheila and I, well councillor Ireland and I, sorry, do spend a bit of time out there, and from local cattle truck drivers to the RFS, there's a lot of cars from Brisbane that go out and visit certain things out that way, and they're not getting off the road, and the road isn't wide enough, and it's, you know, people are scared to drive on it. So that's obviously an indicator that something needs to happen, and I'm glad that we're at least starting the process by designing. I wanted to be open with the community on a couple of other projects. Not happy to see the William and Mary Street Blackstone intersection deferred. That's a project I think that in a perfect world would have been delivered before I had any interest in being a councillor. Same can be said of the Ripley Road Reef Street intersection at Flinders View. And then lastly, on School Road, we've deferred some design money and preliminary works money for 23, 24, and if you're there of a morning, it's pretty critical because there's been quite a few houses moving to the Greenwood Village area in the east of Red Bank Plains, and because of the volume of traffic on Red Bank Plains Road, again, people are scared of, scared of going on to it. And that particular intersection won't be upgraded until the delivery of Red Bank Plains Road stage four. So people are going the other way via Halletts Road and then on to School Road, and at school time, it's just really quite bad, the congestion, it's, it's, it's noteworthy, it's, you know, people are struggling to get around our city at various points of the day. So I just bring those three items up. And just in sum, I've got some serious concerns about where our finances sit beyond the forward estimates, those years five to 10. In the budget, it's got some pretty, some pretty big budget surpluses projected, and I don't know if we've, we've found the golden goose, but it's very rare for any level of government to achieve those things over the long term, so I'm very concerned about that, and I, you know, but as always, I'm willing to work with all of you on that. I know we've all got a resolve to be the best council we can be, and that's what I'll be focusing on in the next 12 months. It's just important for me this morning to draw a line in the sand and say, these are things I'm not moving on, these are things I'm not accepting, these are things that we need to do better. And looking forward to working with all of you to do just that.
Thank you deputy mayor, I think councillor Tully, do you have your hand up as well to make some comments?
John, I think she wanted to speak.
Thank you mayor, so obviously this budget build has been a significant one for us all. We've come a long way in two years. We as councillors need assurances that the financial information we receive is accurate and reliable. And in order for us to do that, the insurance, assurances come to a large extent through sound systems and internal controls. Whilst management is usually responsible for the implementation of appropriate internal controls, this council is collectively responsible for the development and review of these controls. In this budget, we've got the inclusion of Ripley in our capital works, and I'm happy with that. Like I said, we've come a long way. I am yet to see updated QTC projections and figures for the CBD redevelopment after several months, and I requested that at the last meeting, noting that we have an upcoming workshop after this budget delivery on the 7th of July. Our asset register and associated conditions for these assets is inferior, but I know that the organisation is working to address this. The fact that our infrastructure and environment department, including open space maintenance teams, have not grown with the level of new roads and parks that we have taken on is concerning to me, but I know this concern has been heard by management, and I look forward to the changes to come. The contracts for open space maintenance were previously awarded on a 40% weighting on price, which consequently saw them collapse. And my division and councillor Tully's division really saw the brunt of that. In my opinion, I think I've let everyone know that this council needs to prioritise spend on what we are fundamentally here to do. We need to have a widespread prioritisation of projects across all departments of council, and we need to plan future budgets well in advance, with increased deliberation for future years, not just the immediate three year forward. We need accurate assumptions in our long-term financial forecasts, so our figures and our reports speak the truth. So that if assistance financially is required from other levels of government, we are in a position to ask for what we need to ask for. I know that the organisation has heard my concerns throughout the budget build process, and I thank them for that, and I thank them for all the hard work that they have done so far. Special thanks to Sean Manniken because it is infathomable how far that department has come under his management. Looking back a year, two years ago till now, I, I, I don't know how he's done it, but I just want to thank him and the team under him, and everyone in council for all the hard work. It's not easy. We need to get better, and I trust that we will. Thank you.
Thank you councillor John, councillor Tully?
Yeah, thanks mayor, I just have some very brief comments to make, and then a question at the end just for clarification. I'm referring specifically to several issues in Division Two, and of course, in any budget in any year, there's not always the opportunity for everything to be included, because at the end of the day, it's the bottom line on people's rate services which governs to a large extent what we do and how we do it. But there's a couple of issues that still haven't been addressed, have been raised by myself and councillor Johnic over some period of time now. One is the fairly urgent need now for traffic lights on Augusta Parkway at Brookwater, particularly at Tournament Drive. There's four lanes of traffic there, high pedestrian movement, that's the vehicular movement into the Brookwater Golf Club. But on diagonally opposite corners, there are commercial premises. I believe that we need to relook at that during the coming year too, for some urgency. It is a traffic issue, serious traffic issue, because Augusta Parkway is the busiest suburban road that is non-main road in, in the city of Ipswich, and I would urge councillors to support the Division Two councillors next year to advance that particular project. In a similar vein is the intersection of Allison Queen Streets, Goodna, that's in close proximity, within a kilometre of Three Schools. And it's an extremely busy intersection, many hours of the day, and that needs to be advanced rather than put back further, which it has been. Councillor Johnic and I have espoused a community cricket oval at Britain's Road, Augustin Heights, and I, that's the old Red Bank Plains, Goodna Pony Club land. I would hope that we could look for external, and if necessary, internal funding for that. It's, the local residents are very anxious for a project of that nature as a community cricket oval, and a sporting oval in that vicinity in, in the suburb. The other thing is, and there is money in this budget for, for flood restoration, it's now just over four months since the flood hit the city of Ipswich, the city of Brisbane, and some surrounding areas. I would hope, and I've, the last couple of days, I've seen a timetable, there are five sporting groups in Division Two which have been seriously affected, and I hope, and for many of them, that's during their peak sporting season for adults and children. I would hope that we give that a very high priority in, in the expenditure. And I know there've been issues in relation to, you know, getting workers and tradies to be able to perform that, but it is having a serious impact on a number of clubs. Western Spirit, the Goodna Bowls Club, Goodna Rugby Union Club, the Goodna Netball Club and Just Sports Gym. So if that can be made a priority with the budget adoption today. Could I just ask one question mayor? In the documentation that's been provided to us, there's a reference to the average residential owner occupier general rate for 2022, 23. Now, maybe I, I've tried to find the comparison of that, what is the percentage increase from 2022 to 2023 for the average residential owner occupier for rates and charges combined?
Which, which page are you looking at of the?
Oh, oh, well, I'm just, uh, referring to that particular document, the budget at a glance, for example, but it doesn't give the comparative, um, figure for the increase, um, between last year and this year for the average residential owner occupier, um, rates and charges combined.
Yep. Well, we do know overall it's four point four nine percent as a, as a rate rise.
Yes, I'm talking about the, the, the combined residential for rates and charges.
Yep. So would you like to ask the CFO that particular number?
Yes, please.
I'm getting a nod from four point four nine?
Yes.
For the average residential area.
Does that include the charges?
Yes, councillor Tully, it does.
So just from the floor, we've heard from the, um, acting general manager, said yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question. Thank you, councillor Tully. I'll open up further discussion by, by councils. Yes, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll keep it short and, and sweet. I, I absolutely agree with, uh, the commentary, um, from my colleagues here this morning. In particular councillor Madsen's, um, pointing out, you know, I guess the disappointment that historically, um, sorry, some historical projects, um, haven't made their way, uh, to our three-year, uh, capital programme. Indeed, some of them aren't even, um, in the queue on the ten-year, uh, list. Um, however, in saying that, we, we have, we, we've been dealt a hand and I am confident, um, that we are all advocating hard, um, for these relevant, um, projects that impact and, um, are important to our residents do make it, um, onto the capital programme. For Division Three, um, we represent many, uh, historical suburbs. So Kerben Channel, um, is, um, a basic right, some would argue, and, and appropriate for properties within the, uh, inner city, uh, to have. And, and I'm delighted that we're continuing with that Kerben Channel programme. Uh, equally, um, another, um, big piece of, of the budget, um, directly, um, for Division Three relates to our, our flood, our response and our preparedness going forward. Um, a lot like, um, my fellow councillors, um, down the eastern suburbs way. We, we look after, um, One Mile, North Beval, uh, Basin Poppet, uh, and Ben Danbar, who were terribly impacted by the floods. And I'm extremely proud of the response by this council, um, in stepping up and, and helping our residents in need. Um, I guess just a couple of general comments. Um, you know, we were elected and, and it's been told to us several times, we are elected to make good, sound, financial and ethical decisions for the whole of the city, not just our division. Um, and, and from my, my legal and banking background, I, when I think about the things that keep me awake at night, um, the investment, the quarter of a billion dollar investment in our C B D here, the Nicola Street precinct is not lost on me. The, the importance of its success, uh, the, the risk and, and the financial burden at times on the wider Ipswich city. However, I remain passionate, um, and, and convinced that long-term, having a thriving, um, C B D, um, brings enormous economic benefits for the entire city. Um, equally, um, up there, I guess what keeps me awake at night is, is our obligations, uh, as Ipswich City Council in relation to the Ripley P D A. That is not lost on me. Um, and, you know, meeting our obligations and expectations within, within the community, that is huge. Um, so with that, um, I'd just like to finally also highlight, um, again, the ongoing concerns discussed by this group, um, and are certainly discussed regularly, um, at the External Audit and Risk Committee that councillor Kunselman and I, um, are privy to. Um, and that is the ongoing projects around I T and asset management. There is a lot of work to be done, but there has been some good work underway. And we have some great specialist advisers watching and helping us navigate these difficult times. That does give, um, an element of comfort to me. So I would just like to, uh, finish by, um, thanking council officers, um, our C E O, our general managers, our finance team for their extraordinary efforts, uh, during this budget process. And as already mentioned, um, specifically general manager Sean Madigan, managing infrastructure, I E D, and this beast that is Nicola Street precinct. I think about things that keep me at, uh, awake at night. I'm not sure that he does a lot of sleeping, so I commend him for his counsel, his advice, um, and guidance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Doyle. I'm looking at the, the chair that councillor Fettner only sits in. Councillor Fettner, would you like to make some remarks and comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd just like to take this opportunity to focus on, um, I guess, um, on a budget day like this, some of the council's priorities, um, that don't generally get spooked but are, are an important part, um, of our community. Um, so it would be remiss of me as the Chair of Community Culture, Arts and Sports not to talk about some of the amazing work, uh, that's been done in partnership with our community. So this council has continued its commitment to support the city's community organisations and local artists with a focus that builds on strengthening community. More than eight hundred thousand dollars in this budget has been allocated for grants, for clubs, for non-profit, non-for-profit organisations, local groups and creators through community funding programmes to support projects, events and activities that benefit the Ipswich region. Ipswich's local community groups and clubs are the lifeblood and focal points of our creative and collaborative community. We are committed to supporting our local initiatives and partnerships that encourage participation in community life, celebrate Ipswich's diverse cultures and contribute to a happy, healthy and sustainable city. Um, I'd like to once again highlight the important work that this council played in not only, um, the immediate disaster of the recent flood event, but also the part that it plays in community recovery. Our community, um, engagement experts really stood up. The entire branch went out into community and helped our residents get back up on their feet. And I want to acknowledge that there are still so many families out there who are struggling, um, to do that. But councillors committed, um, and councillor Doyle and I are committed, um, you know, in our interactions with our residents every day to ensure that the community has the access to the help that they so desperately deserve. Ipswich's fields and ovals, trails and tracks, pools and courts attract athletes of all ages, abilities, where local legends are born and future world beaters are forged. Unfortunately, so many of our sporting facilities were damaged during the floods earlier this year. And in this budget, council will continue to work towards the repair and rectification of all of those issues. Much of what makes Ipswich welcoming, vibrant and livable is due to our city's passionate volunteers, artists, musicians, creators, performers, sports people, club members and staff. This budget continues our commitment to empower and strengthen the capability of organisations at the heart of our community. A further one hundred thousand dollars has been allocated to strengthen community groups, a key deliverable of council's community development strategy, including the development of citywide inclusion and access plan, which both councillor Kunselman and my deputy chair and myself are very excited about. As part of council's ongoing partnerships with Arts Queensland, sixty thousand dollars of funding will be delivered locally through the Regional Arts Development Fund. This budget reflects the Creative Industries Action Plan, which was developed in consultation with local artists and businesses to proactively nurture Ipswich, Ipswich's creative industries. A thriving arts community is crucial to our city's spirit and identity. So we're excited to continue collaborative projects with our creative community and, and deliver opportunities to showcase Ipswich's emerging talent. This council recognises the aspirations of creatives and developing sustainable careers based in Ipswich. And this budget continues to provide funding and opportunities to share their work with the world. Council's calendar of regionally significant events and visitor experiences remain a focus. From the Rosewood and Marburg shows to Springfield and Riverview festivals, we love our community events. And this budget supports our growing creative and inclusive community. We will continue to proudly celebrate our city's culture and heritage through popular festivals such as the very exciting upcoming Spark Ipswich, Christmas in Ipswich and Galvanised, which celebrates our heritage buildings. Our much-loved library programming continues and our catalogue is involving, evolving. And that's something that our community really loves and we hear that every single day. Um, and lastly, a very significant change project, um, that we're all watching very closely is the delivery of our customer experience strategy. And significant monies in this budget have been allocated to see that through. That is going to ensure that our residents get the service they deserve when they contact council. Uh, it's an ongoing transformation project, but I think that we've got the right people at the helm championing these wonderful initiatives. So I just wanted to take this opportunity, um, to, yeah, to, uh, focus on all of those wonderful things that are happening in our community. We will continue to build roads. We will continue to pick up your rubbish. But we will continue to enrich our wonderful community here in Ipswich. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Fettner. Lovely words. I'll go on the table. Councillor Milligan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'll just, um, provide a, a brief overview. I'm not going to drill down into any of the specifics. But, uh, with consideration of the contemporary economic times that we find ourselves in and the prospect of the economic forecast for the future, in developing this budget, I am assured that this council has kept at the fore of mind our legislative responsibilities for the delivery of local government services to our community. That is the must. And those are the services that are expected is what we do strive, uh, to provide strategically and operationally deliver. I do acknowledge that, uh, all elected members around this table do want the best for their, the division from which we are elected. But I am extremely, um, grateful for the team that I am a member of, where we take the focus of delivering for the entire city. We discharge our responsibilities in developing a budget like this that covers all major and minor aspects across the city. Also, eh, not just the infrastructure, but also across all departments, including, uh, environment sustainability, which, uh, has come to the fore in this budget, for which I am grateful for the support of my colleagues. Emergency management, of course, due to recent events, um, has also taken a focus. And, uh, I acknowledge that as much as the organisation is, uh, eh, in total, uh, strives daily, uh, for continuous improvement, we as the elected representatives of this organisation also must do the same. We must deliver and we must do the best that we can. In viewing this budget, Mayor, uh, I am confident with my colleagues that throughout the next ensuing 12 months, we are able, we have developed a strategy to deliver the services that we must. And I thank my colleagues for that.
Thank you, councillor Milligan. Councillor Kunselman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I support this budget. I support also particularly the comments of, uh, councillor Doyle in relation to the C B D and the obligations that we have in respect of that. We recognise that Division Four cannot achieve all that residents want. In the end, res- residents are concerned about mowing, about sporting fields, and they're very focused on communities, um, sorry, on customer service. They are always concerned about new developments in their community and the impingement of growing populations on infrastructure and for some, changes to the villages that they love. We have in general immediate pain for future gain. We will be blamed if we do not take some risk in regard to debt and forward planning. I thank councillors and council officers in supporting us to make these decisions.
Thank you, councillor Kunselman. Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in regarding Ripley Road and Reef Street at Flinders View, in the Ipswich City Council's twenty-twenty-one years strategic transport plan, there was a three-year budget for early planning and design of a signalised intersection for Ripley Road and Reef Street at Flinders View. In that, since at that time, that intersection is, um, just not coping with the amount of traffic coming off of, um, the Cunningham Highway or coming from the P D A area of Ripley. This work, um, is now planned for, or some of this work is now planned for twenty-two, twenty-three for design. There is nothing in the twenty, um, three, twenty-four budget, but then there's money again in twenty-four, twenty-five for a detailed design. But there's no commitment for completion of the project. Um, I'm very concerned. I'm very happy to hear that councillor Madsen said that we're going towards surplus. So hopefully the project will get completed in a very short period of time. And on the second, um, item is Red Bank Plains Road Stage Four. In the same twenty-twenty-one budget, on the, um, Red Bank Plains Roads, uh, Stage Four, um, was detailed for work. Um, however, um, I've lost my, my thought, but however, it was initially due for completion in twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four budgets, there is funding for design. I would genuinely hope that construction will be completed within five years. I thank, um, the Sean Madigan and his team. They've been, um, very good at, um, helping Division One with our unmade roads and our rural roads. Um, they're reactive to or proactive sometimes, eh, even, um, in the work that they do. I know it's a tough budget, but for the residents of Division One, I support councillor Madsen in, um, asking that Red Bank Plains Road and, um, the intersection of Reef and, um, Ripley Roads, um, be upgraded as soon as possible because both these roads bring residents into the C B D and facilitate movement across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. And just in closing, before we, we vote, um, you know, in two thousand and nine, the state have made, um, reforms to the Local Government Act and the budget's changed from being the mayor's budget to the councillor's budget. So the responsibility to hand down today's budget lies directly with us, the councillors in this room, not with council officers. Council officers have done their best to support our decision-making throughout this process and have done so in good faith and in the best interests of our city. I thank them all for their hard work and their efforts over the last few months. Thank you so much for your help and assistance to get here today. I now put items A through to X to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. So in the room, we have myself, councillor Ireland, councillor Johnny, councillor Doyle, councillor, um, Milligan and councillor Kunselman have voted for it. How do you vote? Oh, sorry, wait, those, how do you vote, councillor Fettner?
In the affirmative.
In the affirmative, thank you. Those against? Thank you. And the deputy mayor has voted against. Those abstaining? Thank you, councillor Tully. The budget has passed. We'll now move on to item six point two, which is the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual plan. There's quite a lengthy, um, recommendation there. I'll put in one variation because it's a typo. At the very end, it says attachment two. It was meant to be attachment one. There is only one attachment to this particular report. I'll leave the recommendation as it is there. So I move recommendation six point two for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual plan. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. I'll open it up for discussion. There be no discussion. I put six point two to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And in the room, it's myself, councillor Ireland, councillor Johnny, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Milligan and councillor Kunselman. How do you vote, councillor Fettner?
In the affirmative. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those against? Those abstaining? Thank you, deputy mayor. And it's carried and passed. We now move on to item three, which is the overall plan for the Rural Fire Resources Levy Special Charge. And that recommendation- And that recommendation is that in accordance with section 94 of the Local Government Regulations, the overall plan for the Rural Fire Resources Levy Special Charge is detailed in the report dated 21st of June be adopted. I'll move that recommendation. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Milligan. I'll open it up for any discussion. Thank you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight, I think this is one of the best things that we do. Saw the RFS trucks out washing out households that had been flooded. We certainly know what they do in bushfire season. I've talked to a number of people across RFSs in the city that are pretty experienced and they're very fortunate to be in a place now where they're not doing sausage sizzles to get enough fuel to do their bit. So the fact that they can now have more modern fleet and better sheds and all sorts of things that support them, keeping people safe and helping people out when they need them, is a good thing and I will always support this because of that. It's, there's nothing wrong with fundraising and those sorts of things. They're a good part of our society, but I just, as a young person, I often take for granted things like the changes with local ambulances, for example. I was about 25 before I found out that they used to have to have local fundraising committees, so that there was ambulances. And then, you know, you don't have much to do at the RFS and then you find out that they used to have to fundraise to get fuel. These are vital and essential services and I'm more than happy for council to have this levy to support them so that these services are there when we need them. And also full credit to all these volunteers. I still find it pretty incredible in today's world where things are so busy and a lot of these volunteers make sacrifices so that they can help out the community. They miss out on time with their family and other things and they're, you know, they are the very fabric of our society and full credit to them as well.
Thank you, deputy mayor.
Just wanted to second everything through your chair, what the deputy mayor has said. And obviously we've seen QFES out in droves during the floods and end of 2011 as well. There, it's not just about fire and I can relate to auditing books of ambulance organisations on their fundraisers to fuel financial, their finances to then go out and help the community. So it's, it's a little bit bewildering to me that they rely so heavily or have relied so heavily on charity and contributions and get so little for what they do, unasked and mostly volunteering. So, yeah, from the bottom of my heart, I just wanted to highlight that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Johnick. There's no other comments. I'll put 6.3 to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. In the room, it's unanimous. Councillor Fettner, how do you vote?
In the affirmative.
Thank you very much. It's carried. We now move on to 6.4, which is the rates timetable for 2022-2023. And I'll move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Kunselman. I'll open it up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I put 6.4 rates timetable to the vote. Those in favour? Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Fettner, how do you vote?
In the affirmative, thank you.
Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We go to 6.5. I know that we do have a couple of conflicts of interest here. So we'll move with, I'll move with recommendation A first for the rates concession. So I think we can all stay, if I can ask, I think, if I may just check. I think we can all stay for recommendation A. I think it's recommendation B that councillor Madsen is leaving. Is that correct? Yes. I'm just checking which one that you'll be not attending, councillor Kunselman. B C? I'm just double checking him. Apologies. Attachment four. Although actually, C is attachment four, which I think councillor Tully did, has declared and is able to stay in. I'm just double checking here.
Sorry, Chair for councillor Kunselman?
So I think it's D. I think it'd be D for yourself, councillor Kunselman. Okay. Thank you very much. So all councils can stay for the recommendations A and B? Oh, sorry, my apologies. A and C. My apologies. Okay, so the recommendation A, that's having satisfied the criteria of section 120 of the Local Government Regulations, as well as the rates concession policy, the properties detailed attachment two, be granted 100% concession at the differential general rates for 2022-2023 financial year. I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Ireland. Any discussion? No, I'll move that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Fettner, how do you vote?
In the affirmative, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll just pause while the deputy mayor leaves. Thank you. Recommendation B is for the rates concession policy for properties detailed attachment three, be granted 100% concession of the differential rate. I will move that. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion on attachment three? No, I'll move that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the room. Councillor Fettner, how do you vote?
In the affirmative, thank you.
Thank you. It's carried. I will now pause while we wait for the deputy mayor to return. Thank you, deputy mayor. We're at recommendation C. We will look at the rates concession policy for properties detailed attachment four, be granted 100% concession of the differential general rate for the next financial year. I will move that. Do I have a second? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Any discussion? No. In that case, put it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous in the chamber. How do you vote, councillor Fettner?
In the affirmative, thank you.
Thank you. Up to item D, so councillor Kunselman, I'll let you leave. Thank you. I move recommendation D, which is the rates concession policy for the properties detailed attachment five, be granted 100% concession of the differential rates. I'll move that. Those, a second for that. Thank you, councillor Johnick. Any discussion? No, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous in the chamber. Councillor Fettner, how do you vote?
In the affirmative, thank you.
Thank you very much. It's carried. Thank you. And as we close, I'd like to thank the councils. It was been a tough budget, as I said in the opening, with COVID and global impacts. And then when we had to sit down again with the flood and take things out that we're very passionate about to improve our city. Thank you very much. I will now close the meeting at 9:57. Thank you very much.